Good work Leonie. Mover and seconded for the apologies councillor Mailing and councillor Brandall in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried. So any declarations of interest in relation to any items on today's agenda? No, there are none. So we'll now move to the public forum. So we have three people speaking in the public forum and they're all grouped so 10 minutes each. Lou Solomon I understand is online. And the other two representatives here in the room. Just for noting, given that there is a number of appeals relating to plan changes relating to Nelson Airport. All of the people speaking in public forum are aware they just need to steer clear of any of those items in their presentations today. And also noting that so public forum is precisely that, an opportunity for those people to put their positions across to council and there are no questions. It's not a debate or a discussion. So that is the way the standing orders work and the way that it will operate. So we will go through in the order to which they are in the agenda. So firstly, we have Tahuna Beach Camp and Steve Cross is presenting on behalf of. Noting as groups 10 minutes and we'll give you a nod at eightish.
Morning everyone. I'm here to continue the push for you as shareholders to direct the airport company to act as a good neighbour. I've read the legal opinion attached to the agenda paper. I think the legal opinion makes a bit of a mountain out of a molehill. I think the risk that anyone has deep enough pockets to undertake a very extensive judicial review with a low chance of success, it's very remote and only likely to occur in a situation where NAL has committed an egregious breach of a good neighbour provision. Regardless, I don't think it's unreasonable that behaviour by NAL should be subject to a legal review just as NCC and TVC behaviour is. Things changed when NAL became funded against a ratepayer guarantee rather than through commercial borrowings. I don't think it's unreasonable that an entity funded entirely by public funds should have this level of accountability. So I'm saying that things have changed and you know, there shouldn't be any fear about a legal review, that's one process that keeps things straight. It does seem rather silly that we're having a debate about a good neighbour clause. This is normally what most corporate bodies in my experience do as a matter of course. Most corporates fully understand the need to be a good corporate citizen and to act in accordance with some sort of social licence. I want to acknowledge that NAL appears to be making efforts to build bridges with the community. Although so far the olive branches haven't trained cited to meaningful actions. I've come to the conclusion that you as shareholders must be more decisive about how you want to see NAL behave within the community. And be clear about what you want from NAL. I've heard staff say that a good neighbour clause in a SOE or SOI is a nebulous statement and doesn't have any real meaning. I disagree. The SOE, SOI is full of nebulous statements such as "NAL will use best endeavours to maximise the annual dividend payout to the shareholder". Or "NAL has committed to reducing its impact on the environment, including its contribution to climate change". So there's a lot of nebulous statements throughout the SOE and SOI, but everyone knows what they mean and what the intent is. I think we all know what is meant by being a good neighbour. That's the opposite of being a bad neighbour. NAL has been a bad neighbour on multiple occasions. And for example, a more recent bad neighbour event occurred on 4th of January at 4:45am when a private jet took off from Nelson Airport at a time when we had 2000 campers staying with us on holiday. Where else in the world would this be acceptable? I doubt that anyone in this room would think it's proper that visitors to this region seeking to have a relaxing holiday get woken at 4:45am by the roar of a jet engine from a corporate jet that is on a non-emergency flight. The NAL response to complaints about this was to advise the complainant that there is no night time curfew at Nelson Airport. In other words, it was quite okay for this to happen. Are we to expect and accept that this is okay and will happen again in the future? That seems to be the case. The airport seems to be tone deaf when it comes to understanding its effect on the local community. This jet incident almost seems to be like the airport is giving two fingers to the local community and asserting its right to do whatever it pleases because it has been granted a very liberal noise regime that it feels at liberty to exercise. Just because there is no night curfew doesn't mean that they should happen. Flights should happen. NCC has a resource consent to discharge untreated raw sewage into Tasman Bay, but that doesn't make it acceptable. In the same way, noise pollution at inappropriate times is unacceptable also. There are other reasons why shareholders should require a good neighbour clause in the airport SOI. Under section 167 of the Resource Management Act, a requiring authority like NAL is required to give proper regard to the interests of those affected and to the environment. If the minister believes that a requiring authority isn't failing to meet its responsibilities, they may revoke its status. Similarly, section 59 of the Local Government Act outlines the objectives for council-controlled organisations, including the responsibility to exhibit a sense of social and environmental responsibility by having regard to the interests of the community in which it operates. The good neighbour clause is merely reflecting what NAL is already required to do as a requiring authority and as a CCTO. The good neighbour clause is a means whereby you as shareholders can assure yourselves that you're exercising proper government's oversight by drawing attention to the legislative framework that NAL operates under and requiring compliance with that framework. There is a further reason why you should require NAL to act as a good neighbour. If they don't, who hears about it? You do. Do you really want to be, have the role of being the airport's complaint manager? In that regard, I note that shareholder intervention was needed recently for another event not so long ago when an Air New Zealand flight was diverted to Nelson late at night. Passengers were left stranded at the terminal with no accommodation available. Airport staff then attempted to usher them out of the building at closing time. I know that the day after this event, Mayor Smith visited the airport CEO and advised that this action did not meet shareholder expectations. So a precedent has been set for shareholders to instruct NAL on unacceptable behaviours and quite rightly so in my opinion. But this shouldn't be necessary in the first place. In summary, on this issue, I still consider it important that a message be given to the NAL board, whether through a SOE, SOI or even verbally today, that the shareholders expect NAL to get on with its neighbours and have proper regard to them, to do the right thing. I also think that any good neighbour clause needs to embrace the principle of nāko puno, integrity, which the airport espouses. They've defined this as being the equality of being honest and having strong moral principles of being honest, open, ethical and fair in all our actions. Again, this has been far from the case. The airport master plan that sets the direction for the next 30 years was never presented to shareholders. It's extraordinary that a plan that can have such wide impacts never reached the shareholders. Councils were never given the opportunity to question the impact of the plan on the community. One of the objectives of the plan was stated to be provides the airport's neighbours in the Whanau community with information on how Nelson Airport may change in the future. Well, the master plan that was made publicly available had several notable omissions, especially in regards to the development of the southern end involving multiple hangars up to 20 metres high. Project J, as this development is codenamed, has been put through a non notified consent process and has escaped any public review. The bridging of Jenkin Creek for access to a new car park on the eastern bank was also missing from the master plan. And somebody might want to ask today what Project J is all about. We don't know whether J means J for jet. Be interesting to know. We see the need for far more openness, transparency and community engagement from NAL before trust and respect can be restored. I hope that today this meeting can, in whatever way, stress that shareholders expect NAL to act as a good neighbour. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm sure I'll comply so much. Next up, we have the Business and Citizens Association. So Jacinda Stevenson speaks.
Welcome Jacinda and Paul. Over to you, so 10 minutes, same thing, little ding at eight, if you are still speaking at that point.
Great, thank you. Kia ora, my name is Jake or Jacinda Stevenson and I'm the Chair of TBCA. I am honoured to be joined by my predecessor and former mayor, Paul Matheson. Tahunanoa Business and Citizens Association has been advocating for the residents in Tahunanoa for decades. We always pride ourselves in having a strong relationship with not only our community but wider Nelson and we have a close relationship with Nelson City Council and Tasman District Council. As volunteers, we endeavour to always be respectful, informed, transparent and passionate. TBCA find the timing of both the SOE and the SOI to be interesting, considering the community can't speak, again, in a robust and productive manner due to either hearing procedural or legal constraints. What is the role of local government in New Zealand? They are responsible for making decisions about local or regional activity to ensure a healthy environment, thriving families and businesses, safe spaces for all and a culture that supports every individual's sense of belonging. "Local government is all about community", that's a direct quote from the local government website. So Nelson City Council, when is the time for you to engage and explain the ramifications of different plan changes for our local communities? Other than Queenstown, I believe that Nelson Airport has the closest proximity to residents and communities whether Tahunanoa, Stoke or Manako of any other regionally significant airport in New Zealand. The community is very much a stakeholder. Is there a reason that NAL's statement of intent does not reference community? A quote from Queenstown's statement of intent. "Queenstown Airport is an important majority community owned asset and is uniquely positioned to serve the needs of the community, the regional economy and connect people to our district and broader region. We are proud to be part of the Queenstown Lakes community and it's important to us that we balance our activity with the desire to preserve what makes our region a special place to live, work and visit. Surrounding neighbourhood communities in Nelson surely deserve that same balance." Again, I quote from Queenstown. "Responding to climate change, supporting our people and community and ensuring we are a resilient and responsible business is incredibly important to us. You can find more about our sustainability initiatives, community partnerships and what we're currently working on at Queenstown below. This is directly from the Queenstown 10 year strategy. This vision and mission has served us well as we've developed our strategy. We have taken the opportunity to meet with a wide range of stakeholders across the airport campus and wider region. Three pillars have emerged in our strategic plan. Resilience, experience and community. Everything that we will achieve and the contributions we will make are encapsulated with these pillars. Was there consultation and feedback sought by the shareholders when Nelson's 2050 master plan was drafted? As with the example from Queenstown above. Congratulations needs to be given to Queenstown who yesterday announced the completion of the first engineered material arresting system or EMAS in Australasia. Both on time, 22 weeks and budget, 23 million. A nice touch by project manager, Miss Hartthorn, acknowledging the airport's neighbours. Maybe the wording of being a good neighbour has created an unnecessary debate, including a staff report on the expression as well as legal opinion. The first thing that must be addressed in Nelson Airport's limited statement of intent is the definition of a stakeholder. Under objectives, NAL has defined the stakeholder to be the shareholder group. Group shareholders, that's what's in their draft. Tasman and Nelson communities broadly and Iwi, hapu and Maori organisations. What about other stakeholders? Stakeholders should also include the community, which includes but is not limited to community associations directly and indirectly affected by airport operations, residents associations, the business community, regional tourism organisations, industry sector groups. Those community groups specifically established around airport matters and infrastructure owners on the airport precinct. Throughout NAL's draft statement of intent, the stakeholder referred to does not include the above communities. Firstly, we'd like to thank the council staff for providing a report about the different options on whether the wording of consider the interest of surrounding community and acts as a good neighbour can be included in the statement of intent for Nelson Airport. Quick question to staff. Once a statement of intent is adopted or notified, published, please explain how that statement of intent can be altered or edited after being adopted. If so, what notification would be given to shareholders and stakeholders? Today councillors, you have three choices to vote on. I won't read them out, there's option one, option two and option three. Staff have recommended option one. We would like to see option two considered instead of option one and three. Why should the community and other stakeholders have to wait another year to be considered in Nelson Airport's statement of intent? And option three, actually I will read that one out. Take no action on the matter. The advantages of this meet the requirement of the Local Government Act. The risks and disadvantages, the community groups who raised the matter may feel that they have not been listened to. I'm sorry, but do you not realise we haven't been listened to other than a half hour slot last May? We were really looking forward to being able to honestly, robustly and inquisitively ask questions to Nelson City Council staff or councillors on behalf of our community, who we advocate for and because of this opportunity never happening, we sadly had to make the decision we did on Monday. It is of great importance that both Tasman District Council and Nelson City Council provide a statement of expectation that will ensure Nelson Airport Limited's statement of intent will build a strong mutually beneficial relationship across the community. We urge the joint committee to seek that NAL clearly reflects in their statement of intent how they will address the social, environmental, economic and cultural wellbeing of the surrounding communities within the context of continuing to deliver a profitable and sustainable business enterprise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Jacinda, thank you Paul. Next up, we have online, Lou Solomon. Oh, he's just dropped off, that's unfortunate.
Shall we do the minutes?
We can do the minutes while we attempt to get Mr Solomon back again. So the minutes, so item 5.1, Joint Committee of Councils, 19th of November.
Happy to move.
Move Mayor Smith, seconded councillor Courtney. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried. Probably shouldn't start the next item until we've concluded the public forum. I'll be terribly disappointed not to hear Lou too after many years of regular appearances in front of us in relation to another project. I was looking forward to hearing him talk about something to do with Nelson City Council. Oh, you were so joyful. So I would just note, so when staff, Nikki wherever you are.
So just a question that was asked by the previous public forum speaker about the process of statements of intent can be altered post their adoption and if so, what process? So if you could just touch on that when you're...
Good morning everybody.
Morning Lou.
Sorry for being late.
That's all good, no worries. Nice to see you again. So you have 10 minutes and we'll give you a little ding at eight minutes should you still be speaking.
Thank you. Good morning everybody. So Pat Whitehead this morning is as Chair of and technical advisor to Nelson Airport Noise Action Council. Now, I know the previous speaker spoke to you about good neighbourly relations between Nelson Airport Limited and Representatives. I unfortunately can't hear the speech but I have these notes here. And I would just like perhaps to... Um, and, um, I would just like perhaps to, um, speak to that point without perhaps mentioning uh, the plan change that I assume that we are not supposed to mention now, that it's, uh, subdued again. And so, uh, the first thing I'd like to speak about, and I quote on the NAL website, as well as benchmarking and improving the environmental credentials of everything we do. And, and the context of this is to be a good neighbour, surely you must do what you say that you are doing and attempt to do what you say you will do in the future. Um, so it back in nineteen ninety six, Becker produced a environment management plan for Nelson Airport. Authority in those days, uh, saying that, uh, they should do emissions testing every two years. That was confirmed in a review uh, in two thousand and five that it was being done every two years and all. But here to require NRAA to monitor every two years the air emissions at the airport boundary and boundary the nearest capital site. Uh, that emissions testing has never been done. Uh, so that's a example of airport just not doing what it says it will do. Uh, another thing that I hear quote on the NAL website, due to the nature of air travel, noise is unavoidable. We all agree that. Noise is generated through aircraft movements and engineering activities. However, Nelson Airport and airlines are conscious of this and have made a commitment to mitigate noise as low as practically possible. Now, back in two thousand and eighteen, Nelson Airport Limited received a report from their own noise consultants uh, with, um, suggestions of how the ground running closure in which engine tests are carried out could be improved to mitigate the noise emanating from that by four dB. Uh, I don't think those changes would have cost any more than hundred thousand dollars. Uh, six cent of it is on. Nothing's been done and nothing is even at this stage moot. Back in two thousand and one, uh, we all went to court, the Environment Court to sort out uh, the NRMP as affects airport noise. Uh, the court order said that Nelson Airport Authority now, uh, Limited would have a noise management plan. That noise management plan was finalized in the third quarter of last year. In other words, it took twenty three years for Nelson Airport Limited to finalize its noise management plan. So what we have is a history of Nelson Airport Limited simply not doing what it says it is doing and what it says it will do. And to be a good neighbour, as Steve has mentioned, uh, this needs to stop being a bad neighbour to start with and start doing what it says it will do. And, um, the uh, moving on from that, uh, I believe that to be a good neighbour, Nelson Airport needs to be communicating with the residents of plans that could impact the lifestyle of the, uh, other residents. And, um, Steve has mentioned Project J. We don't know what J stands for, but is it a coincidence that jet also starts with a J? Uh, in which there's, um, four or five large boxes, uh, shown to the south of the existing terminal. Uh, and there's no explanation of the residents of what's going to be in those boxes, it went through as a non-motified consent. Um, so it's all just, um, we don't know. Uh, and the image that I, um, sent into governance, uh, is another secret development which nobody knows anything about. Um, it appears to be benign in that, um, they're labelled as industrial as and commercial units. Will there be any noise emanating from those? We don't know. Uh, and also it appears that, um, it would have an impact on the golf club because the golf practice range is in that location. And, uh, I haven't had time to, um, communicate with the golf club as to whether they even know. So, um, I hundred percent support, uh, Steve in this endeavors that, um, your expectations and certainly uh, our corporate society's expectations uh, that, um, the airport needs to get on and improve its relationships with the various presidents. Uh, and stopping a bad neighbour and be a good neighbour. Uh, short and sweet, any questions?
Thank you Lou, uh, uh, no, there are no questions. Uh, public forum is an opportunity for you to put your point to us, not the other way around. Uh, so appreciate you taking the time and coming in and speaking to us today. That concludes the public forum, uh, oh, just on time too, that's good. Uh, all right, so, uh, next up we have the report, uh, in Nikki's name. Welcome Nikki. So item six point one, uh, welcome Mike. I will hand over to you to introduce the report and as I said, if you could just touch on the question that was raised in public forum over, uh, amending statements of intent during the course of the time they're in place.
Uh, thank you through the chair, so, um, I'll take the report as read in terms of the question around, um, the statement of intents and so the joint share, so the process is that we prepare a statement of expectation through the joint committee in December, um, November, December period, and then the process from there is that the draft statement of intent is prepared and presented to the joint shareholders committee in April. Um, and the shareholders have the ability to provide feedback during that period around the modification of the statement of intent before the final is, um, delivered at the end of June. Um, and from there, there is obviously, there is a statutory process if the shareholders require modification. And that's usually something that's not done and is done in consultation with the board uh, before exercising that power under the LGA. So hopefully that answers the question of the process.
Okay, thank you Nikki. So you have nothing further to add to the report itself?
Uh, so, um, through the chair, I mean, the, the, I think we're trying to all get to the same place here. Um, and the officer's advice is that under the statement of expectations within LGA section sixty four B, there is an expectation that we, that, that, there is expectations in terms of, um, the sense of social envi- you know, the, the position that the CCO holds within the community. So we have never explicitly said that within our statement of expectation in terms of what we're expecting and so we believe that it needs to be explicitly put into the statement of expectation. Um, that that's how we expect people, uh, the CCOs to operate within their communities. Um, and from there, I think the board will have time to consider that, um, and and put in place reporting and performance measures that that are reporting back to the shareholders around how they are meeting the expectation that we've put to them. So I think it just needs to be more explicit than it is at the moment.
Uh, thanks, can I just clarify two things before I go to, uh, questions? So letter of expectation and the suggestion is that this would be a general expectation to CCOs in general, so not, not specific, although the focus today has been on, uh, Nelson Airport. This would be more of a general expectation. It would then be up to those CCOs in developing their statement of intent for our consideration to tell us how they intend to implement that expectation. And then councils will have the opportunity to have a further discussion about what that suggestion is um, before it is finally approved, is that the process?
Through the chair, that's correct, and so what they could put in place is, is performance measures through their statement of intent um, that they want to report on in terms of how they're meeting that requirement. Um, um, that meeting that expectation and then obviously through their annual report, they will report back on their performance against those performance measures.
Okay, fine, thanks for the clarification around process. Right, of a number of speakers, uh, start with Mayor Smith and then councillor Sanson.
Firstly, Mr Chairman, I just wanted to make a point of clarification and that was the claim was made as a consequence of an incident last year at Nelson Airport that I instructed the chief executive Nelson Airport over an incident that occurred at the terminal, uh, that is incorrect. Uh, I phoned the chief executive after receiving a large number of complaints. The chief executive immediately apologised and said that they were putting out a press release and that they were going to change their procedures, so I just wanted to be sure so that there was not a lack of clarity. The question I had was with respect to the, um, Simpson-Griffin legal opinion about such good neighbour provisions. And my question is, do we have any judicial review court cases that would give us clarity about what the courts view of the way that those good neighbour provisions would be enforced or not? Or has it never been tested, uh, in the courts?
Uh, so through the chair, my understanding is it hasn't been tested through the courts, um, the, the specifics of that.
Uh, thank you, councillor Sanson.
Um, thanks, um, Mayor Tim through the chair. Um, Kieran, Nikki, thanks for your, um, introduction to the report. Um, it was good to hear that the officers think it's necessary to be explicit with Nelson Airport or regarding shareholder expectations of Nelson Airport going forward around, um, demonstrating a sense of social and environmental responsibility, blah, blah, blah. Um, what I'm curious about is the process you've explained um, going forwards, seems to me to be the process that we're currently in, as in we had a statement of expectations meeting in like last year and um, the governance table raised concerns around this and have asked for this kind of wording to be put into the statement of expectations. And we've got a report in front of us today saying, well, we should be doing that, but let's not start that till December, so I think I'm curious as to why we're not just doing it now.
Thank you.
I think it just seems to me it's
Yeah, just in terms, yeah, so the question is around timing, the current status of the letter of expectations and the process that you outlined, uh, where are we right now in that process?
So through the chair, the statement of expectation was, it was issued to the, um, entities um, prior to Christmas, so, you know, the statement of expectation has already been issued and we've been delivered a draft statement of intent already at this point in time. And I also want to make it through the chair clear that we're not talking about Nelson Airport here. We are talking about general expectations and I would expect it to flow through all statement, uh, letter of expectations going forward.
And just for further clarification, so currently there is no wording in the current letter of expectation that reflects the sentiment and or position that the council staff are recommending. So a sub, a subsequent question, is it possible to amend the letter of expectation noting we already have a draft? Or secondly, given we have a draft, um, what is the process should the councils jointly want to see something prior to the next round of letters of expectations and statements of intent?
Uh, so through the chair, in terms of the draft, um, statement of intent, I feel like it's quite late in the process to be, um, putting that expectation on the boards in terms of delivery between draft and final, um, without them having time to consider it and the fact that the letter of expectation went in December. Uh, however, the report that will come to council in November or to the joint committee in November will reflect this wording.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, councillor Stella.
Thanks, Mayor King. Yeah, my understanding from the November meeting was that there was a, um, interest from elected members to have a good neighbour clause in the statement of expectations, the general one. And my understanding was that we say, oh, let's get some more advice on this, but this is still within the context of that cycle, obviously, SOI and there'll be a and a point where we can still keep it in there somewhere, that was my, I might have got it wrong. If that's the case, was always envisaged it would come to this kind of decision at this meeting where we would have to sort of insert it into the SOI rather than amend the SOE, I just wonder if this was and following from councillor Sanson's comment, that just seems we're saying, let's do it on the next cycle, but my understanding is the, the cycle we're in is the one. So I just wonder if this process of amending the SOI was always intention from November or a follow up from Mayor, Mayor King to amend the SOE would be better in my place, in my position? But you're saying it's too late for that, just some commentary on that, those options.
Uh, so through the chair, just to be clear, the, the resolution from November was actually to amend the SOI and we're not recommending that. We are recommending that our expectations are set at a strategic level through a statement of expectation.
So I think the answer to councillor Stella's question is at this stage, we don't have the opportunity to amend the SOE, even if that is the preference of the collective councils. The only thing we could do now is amend the SOI or request an amendment to the SOI. Ultimately, it's a decision of the, uh, CCO itself. But that's not the recommendation of council staff for the reasons that have been outlined in the report. Okay, thank you, good, good question, uh, Mayor Smith.
I'm always looking for solutions and I understand some of the councillors that are concerned that if we do it through the um, statement of expectations, that we don't get around to that cycle in November. My question is thus, the statement of expectations is not a legal document, the legal document is the statement of intent. What would prevent from this council meeting today potentially the two mayors, uh, just writing a letter, uh, to, uh, IHL Airport Company and, uh, NAL to simply say, we're moving down this track and we would like as much as practical for you to observe these in the meantime. These are not legal documents, these are just about, I, 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 I'm just wanting to try and find a, um, solution uh, given the, just the timing of the cycle. Uh, so the specific question is, would there be anything that would prevent the two mayors on behalf of the joint committee writing to IHL and its subsidiaries saying that we are intending to make this change in the statement of expectations for the next cycle? But as much as practically possible, we would like you to, um, observe it in the meantime. I was quite encouraged in the presentation, um, uh, that we heard earlier, uh, that the chief executive for Nelson Airport, uh, and acknowledgement of the groups we heard from this morning is actually out there trying to make a real intent to rebuild those relationships. So would such a letter, uh, be, uh, a way through? Around this timing question, Nikki.
Through the chair, yeah, uh, through the chair, that, that could, you know, that, that could meet, if that met the shareholders expect, you know, what they would like to do, that's fine, I mean, really, it's probably around what they deliver back in the final statement of intent and whether or not you're happy with that. It probably will require potentially modifications within a reasonably short timeframe in terms of how they will measure that, um, and report on that going forward.
Yeah, I'm not sure, uh, Mayor Smith was indicating that necessarily reflected in their SOIs, although they may.
Now, my, my, my view was let the current cycle of the statement of expectations and statement of intent to be worked on the normal cycle, but to complement that, give them an early steer, uh, this is where we are intending to go with the next cycle and if they can start looking at measures, it would be very clear from the shareholders' perspective as to, to, to where we're wanting to go. And if they can start looking at measures, it would be very clear from the shareholders' perspective as to, to, to where we're wanting to go.
Yeah, I think I have no doubt this is a public meeting. I have no doubt the CCOs are aware of the conversation. And the recommendation, I'm pretty sure they can read the tea leaves, um, and, and see what is coming and whether that is sooner or later. Uh, I'd be, I'd be surprised if they're not already aware, but I'm more than happy to reinforce that through a joint letter if that's the, the, um, desire of the meeting. Uh, councillor Paki Paki? And then I'll, I'll rule up for a mover, so we do have.
Question of clarification, really, just on, on, uh, Mayor Nick's question before. I think it's quite a good, good road, but the, the letter itself, is that coming? Do we need to go through the process of having that come from the joint shareholders committee rather than the two mayors? Or is that, that not necessary?
I, I personally don't think.
Then does it become an instruction rather than a, than a, uh, than a?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't see it as an instruction. It's a notification and, and a free, it's adding another layer of free uh, warning that, that this is going to be part of the next round of expectations, SOIs, so.
It's an advice, not an instruction.
Yeah, yeah. Advice, not instruction. Uh, councillor Skinner?
Thank you for that. Um, so the officers, I see with the good neighbour intent or policy, um, that provides that socially environmentally to the stakeholders and the community and organisations. I feel it may have overlooked, and you better fill me in here if we can cover that. Those who own infrastructure on the airport or the CCO, for example, give example of organisations there who own large aviation hangars and you're looking at several million dollars of infrastructure there. And they are part of those who are affected critically in their business going forward on decisions made by the airport. And obviously it's a two-way thing. So does this cover or can we include in the statement of expectation or the intent, the way we therefore use to cover and include that good neighbour? Well, there's a number of organisations that have contacted me with concerns of all sorts of things and appraisals of all sorts of things, but they are quite nervous about this not including their investment in infrastructure.
So I think the, the question is to what extent does anything we put in the letter of expectation affect tenants or occupants or leases?
Correct.
Uh, as opposed to the airport company or any other CCO?
For the airport, the consideration of those.
Yeah, and bearing in mind, I think it is worth reinforcing, Nikki's already done it twice, I think. This is not airport-specific.
No, well, I've made that, I've made that comment.
So you've got all company which has got similar relationships with both neighbours, noise, tenants, et cetera. So the question is, does it affect directly, uh, those tenants leasing?
Support, support that neighbourly understanding.
Uh, so through the chair, I, I see community as community. It's the people that operate on the precincts as well as the surrounding um, community. So I don't think we need anything specific.
I, I I'd be a bit nervous about that weather. That would be seen by all parties as including the infrastructure and tenants and leases on CCO properties. Uh, I, I tend to think you read it, couldn't you read the label, a person?
So, so I just want to clarify the question. So I think the question is that does the, the good neighbours, let's just use the good neighbour thing, you know, from community.
Yeah.
It's probably a better way of approaching it. It does, it doesn't bind those tenants to also follow those. Is that your question?
No, no. So you've got it the wrong way around. So you've got, for example, you use airport as a CCA.
Yep.
They have good neighbourly to the community around. You've listed various organisations. It takes very clearly stakeholders.
Right.
But someone who owned a twenty million dollar hangar on airport ground would like to make feel that they are also a stakeholder in this S, this letter of intent or statement of intent, it seems to overlook.
I completely understand. So yes, so I think the intention of the thing is that it applies to the community in the broader sense, including neighbours, tenants, users and everything else. And that will be key from Tasmanian Council's perspective because obviously our definition of community that is impacted by and relies on.
Correct.
Is broader again, um.
We don't want them leaving town.
Yeah.
So, so my, for me, for me to support either way we go with this is that it clearly states that, for example, a hangar owner, a leasing, someone who has infrastructure built within the airport, not just outside the airport as a stakeholder, but are very much a stakeholder to be um, included and consideration of good neighbourly.
Yeah, hence, hence avoiding the good neighbourly is not necessarily the best because community and or stakeholders are potentially better terms if we get to that point in the letter of expectation somewhere down the track. So. Councillor Malling.
Am I being, have I been fair on it? Where is it?
And I think, I think it's, it is clear that, that expectation is that CCOs treat all of their stakeholders, communities, both neighbours and others well. So yes, I think that's been clarified. Thank you.
I'm happy to move option one and I take note of the advice, particularly paragraph four from the Simpson-Griggson legal advice and the advice from staff. It's not contested in court. Um, you're just laying yourself open for, um, problems in the future. Particularly the airport's been there for forty years. The port's been there for well over a hundred years. Um, they're very important pieces of infrastructure for our wider community and businesses. And we need to enable them to operate safely in the future and to work with their community. So I'm happy with the recommendation from staff and move option one.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved. Uh, just for clarification, do we need a point for three? No, a second bullet point in relation to the letter that was raised earlier effectively?
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest the line of wording? Uh, and I'll pass it on to officers because I'm always keen if we can try and find a, a common resolution that would word this. That joint mayors on behalf of the joint committee of the two council write to IHL, copy to Nelson Airport and Port Nelson, outlining its intent to include in its twenty-five, twenty-six statement of expectations as above, embed as far as practically possible, it work on improving community relations. Now.
Okay, so with, are you happy with the suggested addition? Are you happy to second with the inclusion of that wording?
Second with that and if I could just pass that over to the officers and see if they can read my scribble right.
Well, I certainly don't think they will be able to.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
But maybe they have, they have more experience of reading your scribble than I do. All right, so it's been moved and seconded.
I'll speak.
Uh, and yeah, I'm happy for, uh, you to speak. I'll reserve the right of reply to the mover and, and any other comments around the resolution, uh, Mayor Smith and then councillor Sanson.
Well, firstly.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Excuse me, sorry. Can we get the wording up there prior to us, prior to us starting this? Yeah.
And also just a clarification which councillor Hodgson raised that I think it's the twenty-six, twenty-seven, something.
So that would be the next round. I'm happy to get, uh, I, I thought the process for the new letter of expectations in the report to us is in twenty-five, twenty-six to finalise it. Because the letter of expectations goes to council, goes to the entities November, December this year, Nikki? So for the next year. So let's see if we can get the correct.
So it would apply to twenty-six, twenty-seven, but it will be done in the late twenty-twenty-five. Yes.
Uh, uh, my comments were going to be that firstly, acknowledge the work that officials have done on this. We've got a real interest in having our key community entities like our Turni Beach Holiday Camp and our airport and the Turni community having good relations. Uh, and it has been a difficult for, period for them. The reason, um, our legal advisers are nervous of just simply putting a good neighbourhood provision into the legal documents is that it will create uncertainty and I think that advice is correct. Uh, as elected representative for this community for thirty years, the definition of what is a good neighbour, uh, is quite fuzzy. Uh, and, uh, I could add up in the thousands the number of complaints of disputes over whether the lawnmower next door was too loud, whether not being a good neighbour was them not mowing the lawns regularly enough, uh, whether it was that the fence was too high or the bush that goes over the fence. If it was legally clear, I wouldn't have had thousands of complaints and relationships with the neighbours. What we want to do is to send a very clear message uh, to IHL and its key subsidiaries, the Port Company, uh, and Nelson Airport Limited, that they behave respectfully, that they engage well with their neighbouring communities without getting into a legalistic frame. Because it is my honest view that when you end up in court, the relationship is already stuffed. Uh, what we need to do is to get these organisations engaging early. Now, since, uh, the council made its decisions on the plan change, I've met with the airport company, with the beach holiday camp. I've met with the Turni Newy Beach Association and I genuinely think that there is huge goodwill by all those organisations to make a step change in it. And I think with the resolutions that we have before us, it is us collectively as two councils saying, good on you. We're pleased that you've started those conversations and we just want to back you up and for you to work harder on it. And I think with the letter, yes, it does formalise it, but it's saying actually we don't want the airport company sitting back and waiting until twenty-six, twenty-seven. The letter complements by saying, and we want you to make a priority of this work earlier. Uh, so I think we've landed in a good place as a consequence of quite legitimately councillors and the community raising concerns. And then us providing a practical way forward that doesn't increase the legal risk, that makes planes our expectations of the different groups in our community working hard at good relationships.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Smith. So I think we now have the wording on the board. So is everyone clear? That is what we are debating slash discussing.
Can I just add one, one word on the end, please? And that was now with its community. Just add the word now on the end, please.
Thank you. Councillor Sanson?
Uh, thanks, um, Mayor Tim through the chair. Um, just brief debate. I just want to thank the, um, wider community, community members, um, some who were present here today for kind of raising this issue with us. I have been pretty disappointed to hear that in two thousand and five, an undertaking was made, an undertaking was made to, um, adopt, develop and adopt a noise management plan and that it took the airport twenty-three years to do that. And that for, I think, decades, the airport has been saying that it is measuring emissions um, at the airport boundary. Um, that it's in its environmental management plan. So it's made a commitment and said it's doing it and that it has not been doing this. I think from a governance perspective, surely sometime in the last two decades, members around this table must have said to the airport, how are you going with your noise management plan? How are you going with your emissions measurement? And the airport has possibly said all as well. Um, so I think that this, um, direction that we're giving today is absolutely, um, important and timely and I hope that, that, um, you know, IHL and the boards take, take it on board how serious we are about them, um, you know, attending to these matters and, uh, adopting good neighbourly relationships with the wider community. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, councillor Sanson. Like councillor Ellis and then councillor Murray.
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to, um, just say that it is, is really important that this is being spoken about now. The, um, and I'm supportive of it coming into any possible way that we can, but understand the, the delicate nature of balancing between that good neighbour issue that Mayor Nick has raised. Um, but I am very supportive of councillor Sanson's comments. Um, I would just like to add that, um, we also have, can we please also include in any work with community and when we're discussing community that there is a community now out in Richmond that actually has quite a substantial impact from the airport? That noise travels, uh, and the flight path does now travel over quite a large residential area. And so that when we are working through these processes, that we remember that there is that community. It is not just that localised, uh, community either. So could we please bear that in mind? Thank you.
Uh, thank you councillor Ellis, councillor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just wanted to highlight that, um, I support the motion in terms of what's on the board. Because implicitly, um, officer Harrison's explained in terms of section fifty-nine-one C, there's an implied responsibility of looking after our community and being a good neighbour. So this, I guess, I guess is a step to explicitly saying that when we get some reporting on this table that we're likely to ask these questions in terms of, how are you meeting fifty-nine-one C? So I support the motion.
Thank you. Are there further speak? Uh, councillor Paki Paki and then councillor Stella.
Good, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I appreciate it's really the direction where it's going at the moment. Um, because, uh, this allows opportunity and I think that, that the, uh, we need to be reminded that the members around the table are the ones that are going to do step two. It's really step one in that, in the, the, what we want to achieve. But really the, the, the fact that I think that, that point that how many years has it gone without the members around this table? Not really insisting to our, our CCOs and, and those organisations that they implement some of these things that are community concerns. Um, so, uh, the, the, really the, the, the work needs to be done ahead, you know, ahead of what we're, what we achieve here, um, down the road. So that's, that's really my message today.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Stella?
Thanks, Mayor Tim. Um, as I said earlier, my understanding from the November meeting was that yes, we're going to address this issue in the current cycle, but we just need a bit more information. So in my head, we're, I'm still back in the November meeting, stuck in the past. Um, this, I don't think, I think the recommendation is that we defer it to the next cycle. So to me, that's saying we're not making a decision. So I would rather make a decision today. Um, and it's interesting when we look at the legal advice and thanks for officers and the legal team to get it to us. But it states quite clearly in point four, the main risk of including this wording is that the CEO, the CCOs would have to act in accordance with that direction. So that's the main risk that they'll actually have to be good neighbours. Now, I can understand, almost understand that from a legal perspective, but from a practical community's perspective, I can completely understand it. So the main risk is also the main goal. So yeah, I, I, I don't, um, I won't support the recommendations before us. I'd like to make a decision and I would support having the inclusion um, of that lettering. And I understand it's not ideal that we're asserting a strength to the, um, SOI rather than going through this SOE. But to me, as I said, putting it into the SOI today is the equivalent putting into SOE in November, we agreed that we would just delay the process because we want to get the advice. Um, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stellard. If there are. Uh, councillor Matty? Anderson? Sorry, Matty. Councillor Anderson?
Thanks, Mayor Tim. Um, I, I'm very supportive. I, um, I, I am very grateful to Turner Community for pushing this, um, and I'm glad something's happening. I, um, I see this as an opportunity for IHL to front foot this and maybe exceed our expectations. And also an opportunity because people are good at talking. And, um, that there's an opportunity for them to actually engage and come up with some action. I'm optimistic, but, um, you know, if I was to look back, I, I shouldn't be. So this is an opportunity. I'd love to be. I, I, I love this to go, go well. So this is an opportunity for those guys. I hope they do a good job.
Thank you. Councillor Rollin?
Thank you, His Worship. Sure you enjoyed that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I, I wake up every morning hoping someone is going to refer to me as Your Worship.
Very good.
Thank, thank you, Dan.
I'm, 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 I'm just testing the limits of the meeting today. Look, I, uh, I, I, I as someone, uh, who has spent a number of years, in fact, most of my life living in an area that is heavily impacted by one of these ports, um, sees wholeheartedly the need to do this. Now, it's easy to say, put words and write letters to say that you are going to be a good neighbour and you can use every excuse in the world. But unless you prove it and you go out and do it, you're not exactly being a good neighbour. And we've heard time and time again from this community that they may not feel that they've been heard and they feel that way. And today what we're doing is a step in the direction, but the problem with what we're doing here today is the fact that we're holding back with the past and not actually looking forward. And so what I would like to be seeing us do today is actually. And so what I would like to be seeing us do today is actually say to these companies and ourselves as shareholders, actually as of today, we should be moving forward as good neighbours. Because what we're doing here today is staying in the past and saying, yeah, one day we'll be a good neighbour, but we're just going to make that decision at a later date. And so what we have for us here today, um, I won't be supporting.
Uh, thank you councillor Rolla. Is there anything further? Just before I come back to write a reply, I think, um, I think it's important, uh, coming back to the last point you made, uh, that I think today we are stating very clearly that we expect our CCOs, both the airport and the port, uh, who are referred to directly, but then, but any other CCOs who have neighbours, which there are probably several, um, that, that we do expect that. So I certainly don't see it as just kicking the can down the road and not recognising the requests that come from the community. The technicalities of how we implement that are bound by the technicalities we have in terms of letters of expectation, statements of intent. So hence the, the time delay. But I don't think anyone, particularly those CCOs who are listening uh, in the background, would, would mistake the conversation for not expecting that to be the case from, well, not, not from now on, but actually just to be the case, full stop. I think it's also important, coming back to councillor Ellis's point, neighbours is not the best term. Because neighbours kind of indicates someone really close next door kind of thing. The implications for this are much greater. And as I, I fly in and out of Nelson Airport quite regularly, I quite often go all the way to Wakefield and come back all the way in over, over Berryfields and Richmond West at a relatively low height. So the community that is impacted is broader than just the immediate neighbours. So hence, I think the wording and the expectation is really important to get right. Uh, and while today we have heard very passionately from some direct neighbours or immediate communities, that community is, is quite broad. And just lastly, I think we also want to avoid setting up any of our uh, entities in a conflict situation between differing parts of the community that they are responsible to serve. So given that the two shareholders uh, contain both very immediate neighbours and communities and very um, uh, kind of far away communities, but who are still hugely reliant on the provision of services by particularly the port and the airport. We don't want to put them in a, in a situation where they may feel they have to advantage one over another. It needs to be a wide community consideration. So uh, with that, I will just check whether you wish to have a write a reply.
Just urge my fellow councillors to support it. I think you've summed it up well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, uh, would you like your votes against recorded? Okay, thank you. Uh, so we will now, that concludes that on. We'll now break very briefly. It's slightly past the hour break that I know you are used to operating on in this, in this area. So five minutes, uh, quick break, and then we will come back at quarter two. Uh, so now we have a number of presentations uh, in relation to uh, airport Port Nelson Infrastructure Holdings uh, on their six monthly um, feedback to us. So uh, first up, we have Sue Sheldon and Mark Lovett. I'll hand over to you both. Uh, so ten minutes for presentation, uh, give or take, we'll give you a ding at ten. Uh, and then we'll go from there for questions. Thank you very much.
Through three strategic presentations, uh, we've got with us the acting chair of Port Nelson Limited, John Saethie, and the CEO, uh, Matt McDonald. And then uh, following uh, those two, we will have Quentin Hall as the chair of Nelson Airport and Brendan Cock, CEO. So um, I think you'll see from the presentations that we've made some good progress in I H L uh, forming its way and um, the group uh, being able to start to work uh, more as a group rather than as uh, separate entities alone. So with that, I'll pass over to Mark for the strategic presentation for Infrastructure Holdings Limited. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Welcome, Mike.
Kia ora kato. So we're going to provide a really brief overview of the highlights from our draft statement of intent. And then we'll hand over to the port and the airport, who will drop down into progress into the more detailed operational issues and items in their area. So. There we are. So in terms of the approach to producing our statement of intent, we received that letter of expectations from yourselves in November. The board held a strategy day with the each subsidiary. And then we have a pretty tight timeframe to produce the draft statement of intent by the end of February, which goes to yourselves as the ultimate shareholders. And then in March, the actual board of I H L then have the draft statement of intent and the time to run challenge sessions with each subsidiary, which we're doing over the next couple of weeks. And what we do there is we stress test the target outcomes, we stress test the initiatives to ensure they're in the right focus areas. And we'd be working on that good neighbour ma- item too. So that's in March. And then by the end of June, July, we submit the final statement of intent to yourselves. Obviously, it's not just an annual process. In the background, we are continuously working with the subsidiaries just to focus on how we create value in this board's context for the region and how we deliver a really sound return on investment. So key messages that come out of the draft statement of intent. The profit is subdued, but we've maintained dividends. And we're going to touch on these in the next couple of slides. In terms of climate outcomes, we're focused on achieving a one to three percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions during the next year, may well achieve more than that. Customer and community, there's enhanced services from both the port and the airport to their customers and an enhanced community dialogue. And then in terms of people and safety, both the port and the airport are efficient in their safety systems, which is absolutely critical where you have those types of relatively high risk uh, infrastructure businesses. Now, I'm going to mainly focus on the financial in the next few slides and leave the climate, customer, community, people and safety to be talked about in more detail by each of the port and the airport. Would however, just highlight one thing. Just want to be clear that there is a clear community and neighbour objective in I H L's draft statement of intent already. So clearly we will look at the wording again in there, but it's not, it's not absent, it is there. And yes, it's very much in the fore, forefront of our minds as we work through the coming year. So brief one on profit and dividends, and apologies, the text below isn't showing up particularly well here. So apologies for that. So in terms of these graphs, what we've done here, we've shown on the dotted line what we said in last year's statement of intent. And the solid line is what we're saying in this year's statement of intent. So for the port, you will see the dotted line's higher than what we're saying this year. So there is a reduction in the forecast projected profit over the next couple of years versus what we had said last year. And if you like, if you look at that, it's kind of pushed out a year out. So whereas it was survived to twenty five, it's now kind of survived to the end of twenty five. And the general economic recovery is expected to occur a bit later. When we look at the next graph for the airport, it's a similar story there, but you see the gap persists longer. And what's happened at the airport as they're touched on is the main carrier has reduced the number of seats last year, reducing again this year, and that's constraining growth. And it means that the profit is slower to recover and there's a more persistent uh, shortfall on profit from what we said last year at the airport. And then we move on to the dividends and there, the dotted line and the solid line are exactly the same because the projected dividends that we had last year are exactly the same as the dividends we're projecting this year. So despite the lower profit, the group is not planning to reduce dividends. Now, what that means, and it's in the bullets below, it says it, it results in quite high payout ratios for each of the port and the airport over the next year. We get a seventy four percent profit payout ratio for the port. And that compares with a benchmark for the sector of typically thirty to sixty percent. So that's, is very high. And for the airport, it's eighty eight percent compared with a benchmark of forty to seventy percent. So we're going to look at those quite carefully in the challenge sessions. Sustainable for the short term, need to think a little bit about the longer term. So then we just come to the capital spend. You see again that the dotted line is higher than the solid line. So the, both subsidiaries have rebalanced their capital expenditure, given that growth's been slower to occur. And the average difference is one point three million. Uh, and we, in the challenge session there, we just asked whether we've pulled back capital too much. In long-term infrastructure, there is always a tendency in downturns to pull back. And then you join the crowd in the upturns when construction costs get very expensive to invest and you pay a higher price. So sometimes you can be counter cyclical.
Just for clarification, at one point three or thirteen?
Sorry, thirteen. Apologies. My mistake, 13 million. And then when we look at the debt on the right-hand graph, you can see by 2030, last year, we're expecting debt to be around 200 million. By 2030, under the this year's projections, it's only 100 million. And that's because of the rebalancing and rephasing of the capital spend. Now, what that means over the next few years, the capital spend is mainly on asset renewals. It's a relatively low growth investment, and that's what enables a high dividend payout ratio. Once we go back to growth and need to invest more in growth, the dividend payout ratio will be lower, and hopefully, we'd still be able to maintain the absolute level of dividend, but the ratio is lower because we're back in growth and the profits building in both subsidiaries. This is my last slide, so just on the risks and opportunities. In the medium term, the port still sees subdued freight volumes, and there's the question about when exactly that will recover, particularly in terms of things like Key Connect and the supporting service businesses. There's the capacity constraints of seats on the main carriers into Nelson, which continues to be a risk and just constrain growth. And then we just keep looking at that satisfactory return on investment. Also, some good opportunities, there's enhanced use of assets, as came up before about developments on Jenkins Creek, there's land on Bolt Road. And we have as a group been working on identifying and actually realising synergies between the group companies in areas like risk, property, funding, and we're going to keep working those. So Chair, that's a brief overview of the statement of intent for IHL Group this year.
Yeah, perfect timing. Right on the dinger.
Beat that.
So I've got Mayor Smith's questions in relation specifically to what we've seen from IHL, and then obviously, there'll be the two presentations from the subsidiaries. Mayor Smith, then councillor Mayling.
Could I just ask you to go back to the slide that had the benchmark performance of the group? And my question is sort of the million dollar question, just go back a bit more. It's the one that had in the right-hand corner, the benchmark performance of the two companies. Because the big question for us as shareholders is, are we getting a fair return from the performance of the two companies? And what it noted was that as a percentage, that the port company is at 74% of sector benchmarks, and that Nelson Airport is at 88% of benchmark. Here's my question. What's the benchmark? And what I mean by that is, sometimes you can have a benchmark that within across companies is what we really like them to achieve. What I'm interested in is how do they match up with similar entities around New Zealand, whether it be other port companies and other airports? Are they average? Are they above average? Are they below average in the returns that they're providing to the shareholders, the two councils? So it's really trying to squeeze out from you a bit more information about those sector benchmarks, both of which you're reporting to us that they are below.
No, but I say just for clarification, you'll clarify this, because I took that that they were above the sector benchmarks, and I've read it as below, because he's read 74% of the benchmark. I've read it as 74% of the profit, which is above the benchmark. So could you just clarify whether we're above or below the benchmark?
Yeah, be good too.
It's that latter view, Tim, that you expressed. It's the 74%, it's the payout ratio, and that compares with a 30 to 60% range, so we're above that.
And then the question is, is the benchmark the average for the sector? And can I conclude from both those numbers that the level of return that the rate power of both councils is getting is better than what most similar entities are around the country?
So. Two different questions. So the slide is about dividends, so the percentage of net profit that's paid out by way of dividend. However, I think the question that you're asking, Mayor Smith, is more about the total return of the businesses. So at our board meeting next week, each of the subsidiaries are going to take us through their thinking on their strategy at present, and we've posed some questions on the overall level of performance and the nature of what would it take to move from here to there. So in terms of total return, we've got work to do because it's been impacted by the various factors that you've seen over time, particularly since the pandemic. And but we've got work underway on all of those matters. There was a report on the industry, or that referred to the industry compiled very recently by one of the major investment firms, and they were referring in particular to the two listed port companies. So that's given us some quite good guidance in the meantime of where Port Nelson sits within the port environment in New Zealand. So it's a bit soon for us to really make comments to you on where we're at and what we're thinking of that, but be assured, it's work we've got underway.
Thank you. Thank you. So I've got councillor Mooney, councillor Mackenzie and councillor Brian.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Maybe this question should be more to the port company, but I think it starts with you. I'd be concerned about what is the risk with a lower capital spend in terms of our infrastructure and some of our subsidiaries? And I was particularly thinking about the port and a replacement warmth that has been raised with us previously.
Do you want to? You either answer or I'm happy to refer.
Yeah, I'll just make a general comment that all large infrastructure companies, particularly ports and airports, are continually in this, when will we invest? When do we have to invest? We know it takes time for a development to be delivered. And what's the last time at which we should invest in order for our business not to be held back? And clearly, when you've got reduced volumes, for example, Nelson Airport will have looked at this before the major terminal upgrade, for example. So there's often a pushing out in terms of the plan because the time that the board sees they absolutely need the expenditure has moved out because of economic conditions.
Very similar to councillor's considerations of our capital investment and expenditure. Councillor Mackenzie?
Thank you very much through you, Mr Mayor. It was one comment and then two questions. I think my comment is, look, I'm really heartened by the work that you describe that you're doing within IHL, and it seems to me that we're really starting to see those benefits of taking a whole of group approach, so I'm finding that really heartening. My first question is actually just about my understanding of the graph with the port net profit after tax. So at one level, we've got, you know, we've got five years there where we almost 100% grow the net profit. So I just want to confirm the driver behind that. Is it simply economic growth and volumes through the port? Or is there something else highly significant that actually drives that massive increase on profitability?
But I think it would probably be helpful if we left that question for the port company to answer. Do you think?
All right, well, if they could make a note of that. And then just my second question, and I think it maybe kind of goes to councillor Mayling's question, but in terms of the high percentage dividend payout compared to the benchmark, do you consider as shareholders that we're taking on any additional risks in obviously driving to maintain that dividend payout?
So in terms of that, Christine, what is one of the challenge questions we're looking at just to stress test that? My current understanding from the companies is that we are well investing in the renewal CapEx, and so our assets are being kept up to date. We're not getting the backlog issues you get, say, in the water sector. So the assets are being well maintained, and the question more is about investing in growth or in some cases, more efficient ways of operating. So the airports found some new ways of repairing the runway, that means it extends the life, which is fantastic. So they're the efficiencies we want. So in answer to your question, from what I've seen so far, I'm comfortable that the investments going into the maintenance of the asset base.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Tim. Thank you, Sue and Mark, for the presentation. Just in relation to the debt slide, firstly, I have a couple of questions around this. So the debt is for each of the entities. Is there any debt with Infrastructure Holdings Limited itself? And is that all inclusive in with the debt you've shown us? And the second question relates to the interest on the debt. You haven't shown us anything around interest payments or the trajectory going forward around interest rates, and just wondered if you'd be able to make a comment around that.
Yeah, so the debt is the total debt for the group, and virtually all of that is, we raise the debt and then we pass it through to fund the port and the airport. So it's all fed through to the port and the airport, and there's minimal held in the centre. And then in terms of the interest rates, we do see, because when the company was set up, there was some interest rate swaps, you might recall, were in place. They were cashed up two years ago with about four and a half million benefit. And so correspondingly, the interest rate's a bit higher than it would have been if we'd had the income from the swaps to offset. So the interest rate currently is about 5.8, the effective rate percent, and it drops down to about 4%, 4.5% as those interest swap effect rolls out.
So will that have an impact on the dividend going forward?
Not, the interest isn't a huge, isn't the most material cost in there. So no, I don't think a small reduction would have a huge impact. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sanson.
Thanks, Mayor Tim, through the chair. Kia ora, Sue and Mark, thanks very much for the presentation. I've just got a really minor question, a clarification in regards to, but you can pass it on to the airport if you want to. But, Mike, you mentioned the kind of looking forward, things to look forward to, and the development on Bolt Road. So is that land on Bolt Road owned by the airport? And what's the timing around the development there?
I think that's a question that we should direct to Nelson Airport.
That's right, I only raised it because Mike had referenced it, so just wanted to put a pin in it. Thanks.
All right, so if that's the questions for IHL, we will now move on to firstly, Port Nelson, we'll just go in the order that we've got them on the papers. So Matt and John, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Tim. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tim. Morning, everybody. First slide for us is just the key areas of board focus for the next year. Obviously, we've got plenty of others, but these are the key areas that we will be focusing on. Number one being health and safety. Your P and L board is focused on safety at the port. We're heavily engaged at every opportunity and safety inspections and ensuring knowledge of work as done, not work as imagined, which is a key issue in some of the cases that have been over for the port industry this year. And our people work in a dangerous environment, so we are investing and continue to invest in several CapEx initiatives to minimise the risk of harm. So that's our top priority. Second, you'll be pleased to know is profitability. Delivery on our financial targets is our top priority after safety. Matt will take us through the details of the results to date, but we aren't immune, as you'll see, to the tough economic conditions some of our main local industries are facing. And our key property portfolio is a large area of risk coming up that we must manage carefully. So we have a few entities that are under a bit of stress on the port. People, it's been quite a year of change in the key management positions at the port. We obviously welcome the appointment of Matt McDonald as CEO, which is an internal promotion after a wide search. Matt's promotion has also led to another internal promotion for the GM operations role. And in addition to that, the appointment earlier, or late last year of a new CFO, we're about to confirm a new GM of infrastructure going forward. So key positions in the management team, the leadership team that we need to settle down. And just finally, on this slide, the new business opportunities, you would have seen some press around the Marlborough inland port, which opened last week. We're hoping that that's going to be, set us a reasonable platform for more growth over there. And the big one coming up for us is installation, construction of the new slipway operation, including commencement of the new travel lift facility. So that gear is all arriving at the port, it starts to be constructed over the next month and a half. Both of these areas bring reasonable opportunity for us, but also an increased health and safety risk. So we are very intent on managing that very closely, particularly the travel lift, which is a new facility for us. So for that, I'll hand over to Matt.
Thank you, John. Kia ora kato, everyone. A few slides on, just reflecting on first six months of the year. Or March, it feels a while ago, but you know, from the cargo picture, which is really key to our business, flat, patches, the kind of words I'd use. Look, some areas actually perform not too badly, but not surprisingly, those cargoes, likes of vehicles, patroli, cement, it's not pulled out in there, but you know, those that are exposed to the domestic economy have been, yeah, it's been, it's been pretty hard work, but overall, pretty flat. And then we think about how that translates to the financials, if we drop down to the bottom line, look, we've performed better than last year, behind our expectations, and substantively, that's down due to lower revenue. So although in aggregate, cargo was not, you know, too bad, actually, some aspects of the business and some of the services that we provided were well down on expected activity. So just a quick run through of some of, I suppose, what's actually going on on the port. The fundamentals of crane rate, we've improved that from where it's been last year, so that's been pleasing to see. We've relocated our container truck transfer area, you might have heard that called the VTA, and that's really significant change in the layout and safety improvements for how we operate. Potentially taking a little bit longer to process trucks, but you know, a significant and much needed safety improvement there, so we're really pleased with that. But I'll just touch quickly on mineral sands, you know, the barge is still tied up at Port Nelson, the sand is being trucked. We've had extra cargoes there than what we had thought, and we'll gladly take that cargo, just what the future of that supply chain is, we're not sure, but the next vessels, next export vessels next week, actually. But we've taken delivery of our new electric crane, I would touch on that in a couple of slides, and we completed that first climate related disclosures report. But John's touched a little bit on safety and a couple of specific projects in that space. We've taken our emergency management, our preparation around being able to respond to all sorts of emergencies. We've moved that forward a long way. A lot of work in the traffic management, particularly on the VTA relocation, as I said, and a permit to work system. And there's been a lot of improvement work going on in our employment, employee engagement space on the back of the survey that we had last year as well. Broadly talking about community, really good engagement with EWE through a couple of projects with our new pilot launch and our Marlborough inland port. And on our sponsorship programme, a really, really important part of our sponsorship programme is our annual golf day, and the 20th anniversary of that, we delivered $30,000 for riding for the disabled, which was great to see. And three, I suppose, three of our big capital investment projects, although the Marlborough inland port's substantively, you know, it appears on balance sheet, but it is. projects, although the, the Marlborough inland port's substantively, you know, it appears on balance sheet, but it is um, we are attentive of that, that site, but um pilot launch here and delivered going well and the sort of way ongoing. But very quick touch on how we see cargo going forward and you see, you know, growth out to the end there of twenty twenty eight. Substantively, that's the forestry sector and that's really just the maturity of particularly Golden Downs Forestry. And maybe this is the slide to touch on, on councillor McKenzie's question, you know, going back to that previous slide, some of its cargo and some of its pricing, that's the, the short answer. But you can see there in those, in the, the light grey bar, grey bars, sorry, which are the out years uh that we do expect to see uh increased profitability. And I think, you know, our view would be, even at that level, it's probably slightly below where we would want to be. Look, a little bit of um looking forward in the second half of the year and, and what we've talked about in our statement of corporate and draft, statement of corporate intent, uh, look, we've got uh on my Marlborough inland port open now. Uh, so we're just going through the last throes of um the final sign off before the cargo starts moving, but you know, it, an opportunity for us for actually to deliver both for our customers and our performer, our financial assumptions. And likewise for the travel lift, as John said, that's a huge, huge project, it's an important one for the region. But it's important that we actually um outperform what we've assumed in our business case on that too. Uh, we've talked a little bit about master plan before and that's kind of a, it's a bit of a moving feast in, in that. Uh, but particularly focused on what's happening with the southern boundary. Um, and how that interplays with um waterfront redevelopment as well. And the relocation of our V T As had, um, I suppose some flow-on effects there too that we need to consider. But we still haven't got our electric cranes up and going yet, there's been some delays there from suppliers, but uh that certainly the, the first crane is um, that is getting closer, probably within the next month or so, so looking forward to that. And what we talked about, you know, noise has been talked about in the, in the chamber already, but we'd see us delivering on our, on our obligations around noise management, noise mitigation is fundamental to uh, to our commitment to our community. Uh, and we have the expectations around the second stage of the climate disclosure reporting to deliver on too. And I think I'm onto my last slide here. Uh, look, I just mentioned A C O P up there, what we call A C O P. So that's Maritime New Zealand's new set of how you've got to do safety around the port, really fundamental to the whole of the industry. Uh, that's been hugely beneficial and a lot of work ongoing in there. And, and a lot of the work and learnings that are coming out of the Gibson case just around critical risk management. So very, very sort of um clear focus on making sure we're managing our critical risks as well as we can. Um, our internal aspire values, they've been a part of the, our business for a very long time now. It's actually time to give those a refresh, not the values themselves, but actually just making sure that in twenty twenty five, that the behaviours that we expect through that are um, you know, that that makes sense in today's environment, really. Uh, ongoing engagement, we have a good plan mapped out there with our E W M O partnership plan. Uh, twentieth of January next year is hundred and twenty fifth anniversary of the Nelson Harbour Board, so we will be celebrating in that in some shape or form. We've talked about returning, uh, improving our return on capital already. Our master plan changes and look, those opportunities to grow our key connect business and our commercial property holdings are a constant for us.
Well, it's almost like you lot have practised your ten minute presentations. Thank you, John and Matt. Uh, open for questions. Uh, councillor Courtney.
Thank you.
Mayor Tim.
And thank you, gentlemen, John and Matt, for the um very good report. I want to ask two questions and one is, well, not a question, it's to congratulate you, quite frankly, on your first climate related disclosure report. Um, and uh, I'm only sorry that Colin Devonish is not here to hear what I've got to say, but you are setting a fine example for businesses in the Nelson Tasman region. And uh I think it'll be a wonderful tool for you going forward. And uh I'd like to speak to that just for a moment, please.
Yeah, sure. I mean, um, well firstly, yeah, your Colin, Colin finished up with us in, in, in January, but um
I'm aware of that and
Take his credit, so well, thank you for that, yeah.
Well, my follow-up question was, why did you allow that?
Financial reasons. Australian dollar financial reasons, unfortunately, yeah, yeah. But yes, certainly a disappointment for us.
Have you got anything?
No, I want to know what it means for your business.
Yes.
Efficiencies, um.
Yeah, I, I think, um, look, the second stage of the reporting is another, another level too, and it's a learning. I think, you know, one thing is, um, one of the learnings out of that was, um, how we work with Nelson Airport too and, and producing um some consistency in that. One of the big challenges for our sector as a whole is stage three emissions and uh, you know, that's a real consideration for us and really what, what are we considered to be in scope and out scope. Uh, I know there's a lot of work going on amongst um really in our environmental management community across the ports to try and provide some guidance on that.
Did you work, just a small follow-up on this that I wasn't going to ask, but I will. Um, was there a work, did you have a working relationship with Nelson City Council's environment team at all on, on establishing this uh board?
Disclosure, to be honest, I couldn't actually answer, I'm not sure, sorry councillor Courtney.
No. All right, well, my second question is to do with the slipway.
Hang on, so this is like three questions already, sir.
No, 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 well.
Um, do you have another question is what you're asking through the chair?
May I please?
Yes, you may. Ignore Mel, keep going.
John, John touched on the slipway and I want to know whether the perhaps retraction of um, you know, spending on capital will in any way impact that twenty million dollar project? And what is the timeline for it, please?
Yeah, look, the, um, first, the answer to your first question, no. Uh, the answer to the timeline is the projects, you know, we've had some um issues with ground conditions and piling, so we're, we're, we're a little bit behind. So we're forecasting a uh third quarter this calendar year completion.
Thank you councillor Courtney. Uh, councillor Rolla.
Thanks, Mayor King and um Matt, congratulations. I don't know if we've had the chance yet, but congratulations on your new role. With the, the newly opened inland port in Marlborough, a lot of people that I've spoken to have said, well, what does that mean for the, the, the financial income of Port Nelson itself? And I've said, well, they're the same company. What does that actually look like in terms of your profit and loss with uh material that can now go direct down to Littleton as opposed to coming over to Nelson? What does that actually look like um in a long-term um conversation?
Yes, it's a really good question, thank you. Um, look, in, in terms of um in terms of our Marlborough inland port, you know, we've invested in that with our partners in the wine industry. Uh, and, and really that's a, there's a couple of, couple of things to note. One is that a lot of those services that we will be providing through the inland port, we're already doing within Marlborough, i.e. warehousing and so forth. We have other leased space that will come to an end. So um, one of the key benefits of the new facility is it's basically located right next door to Wine Works. So there's a trucks off the road again, um cargo moving or um but finished wine and, and glass bottles moving between ourselves and Wine Works on electric tugs, so most like um uh airport baggage cart type arrangements. Uh, look, our, we don't want any cargo, what we would call leaking going north or going south. But we'd be naive to think that we always have all the best shipping solutions here and so forth. So there are some customers, for example, who may have a, a shipping line that they can't get access through or Nelson where they want to move it south. So what inland port allows us to do is to clip the ticket on that and ensure that our key connect business is actually still involved in that, the movement of that cargo.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Paki Paki, then councillor Stella.
Uh, can I read this, chair? Um, my first job was down at the port. If you can, anyone in the room here can remember those noisy bulldozers that used to go backwards of forwards on the chip pile? Yeah, that was me, sorry about that. Um, we were talking about noise and good neighbours. Um, and then I worked for the Stephen, both Stephen and companies that were there. So being pretty intimate, I've got two questions. The, the first one is, can you give us an update on Temanaho? And can you also, um, the previous reports and, and, and discussions that we've had with a lot of the entities and C C Os and, and agencies around the place, the words COVID, COVID, the implications of COVID and the effects of it have, have always sort of been a justification for um uh economic performance across the, the board. Haven't really heard that from you guys from today. Do you, do you feel like that we have shared ourselves from the uh, the effects of that? Because one of the points that I, I was, I recall from one of my first meetings was the, the timeframe that's required for shipping bookings and how, you know, how far in advance they needed to do that. And that we would still be feeling the ripple effects down the uh, the economic corridor for, for some time to come.
Uh, first question, Maraho, um, look, she's still alongside our layout berth tied up. Uh, you'll have to ask, where's the mineral sands as to when it's going to go, but you know, uh, but they, they, it's one of those questions.
Charging them?
Absolutely.
My man.
Uh, look, their plan is to, you know, they want to take it away and have it repaired, but you know, they're working with their, their people to make that happen. Um, look, in terms of COVID, I think, uh, you know, not, not so much of any of the direct impacts, but I don't, the, the, the supply chain, if I call it that very generally, is, is very different than pre-COVID. And, and those impacts, I mean, if you look at container shipping, our reliability of services is actually not too bad through here. Was it um councillor Cargo Owners meeting over the last couple of days in Wellington was saying their, their reliability was three percent. So essentially no vessels on window. Uh, but you know, we, we would have used to pre-COVID be any vessel that arrived off window, we would have been at a, a bit of a state around it. Um, so there is an efficiency that comes from that for the whole supply chain, but that's, uh, I think that's just going to stay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Stella, then Mesma.
Thanks, Mayor King. Um, and thanks, John and Matt, for your presentation and congratulations on three points. Electric crane, the, I assume you're still members of the Climate Leaders Coalition, awesome. And um the climate disclosure report, and I wonder if and when that's public, if we could see a copy of that, that'd be great. Or perhaps it's not going to be public.
Yeah, I must say, good question, I'd have to take that one away, but um with the climate, um, at the first stage reported being published and released, I thought.
Anyway, keen, keen to see a copy. Um, displacing fossil fuels, I guess, for many of these endeavours goes to electricity and hopefully renewables. With those very large roofs.
Yeah, yeah, really, really, really good question, I know where you're going. But one of the challenges we have with, with those is actually where the electricity is used is quite a long, you know, quite a long way away substantively that apart from crane operations is with our reefer, reefer towers for refrigerated containers. So it can be very difficult to get electricity, even if we could generate it off those roofs to where it's needed.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if I'm interested in what's the maximum sort of use you could have for on the port area, whether it's providing to ships at a berth and otherwise running the engines to provide, to keep the lights on and so on. Or electric cranes or otherwise, just bearing in mind, you know, I understand it's different to a domestic situation, but the payback there is about eight years and you have inflation-proof energy for thirty odd years. But yeah, I can understand, I was going to, my complete question was, what are the opportunities and barriers? But I think you've sort of addressed, yeah, how much of it could you use on-site, I guess is the question.
Yeah, I'd, I'd struggle to answer that in, in specifics, but um, you know, more and more of the fleet will go electric or variations of that, you know, um, so, so that's an opportunity. And actually probably similar to domestic situation, you know, my solar at home, the first thing it does charge the, the hot water or it's, the fridges are always going. So again, on refrigerated containers and so forth, that base load uh would be the, the, the reality is the peak load that comes from when the cranes are, when the cranes will be going. You know, you wouldn't, you couldn't generate enough on-site to power those.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mesma.
In, in the presentation that we saw from I H L, looking out over the ten-year level, there was a substantive reduction in the amount of debt as a consequence of the capital programme. What are the key projects that Port Nelson has deferred or changed the timing of to have that major impact on the capital investment programme and debt over that ten-year window?
Yeah, good, good question. Uh, so it's not core port infrastructure, it was property development on what we call the Nelmac side of the Wildman side there. Um, and you know, work on those potential developments of um really, you know, they're uneconomic at the moment. So we've taken that out of our forecast.
So the key change is the Wildman Road property not being developed in that ten-year plan. What is the port company's intentions with that pretty strategic and significant uh block of land um to the port? Uh, are you intending to do anything with it in the ten-year window?
Yeah, I, I think we're probably waiting for a, a, you know, the commercial property cycle to be in a different location. But if we could find a, a good development, then we would always be looking at that. For John's just reminded me that, that at the end of that ten-year forecast is the brunt key
Yes.
Uh, replacement still, so you're starting to see the start of that, that's our kind of rough timing on that.
Has the timing of that changed in the latest ten-year plan that we're seeing in consultation with I H L?
No, that, that uh wolf replacement in line with what we were saying in our master plan is still the same.
Okay, thank you councillor Mailing.
Just quickly, it's come to my attention lately that there's a, a large wine lake in Australia where they're reducing their payments to their growers and it's happening in New Zealand as well. Um, are you seeing any impact on export of wine and from New Zealand because of this? Uh, because there's potential for Australia to dump a whole lot of wine on the world market. Um, there, the rates they're paying their growers is half of it, New Zealand wants to get them paid. And our cost structure is higher in New Zealand for growing wine.
Yeah, I, I think like in the, in the first half of the financial year, we saw less wine moving around than, than what we had. And you know, substantively, that was down to market conditions that uh, you know, wineries were, were holding, holding wine in tanks over the last two months and continuing into March. We've seen a lot of bulk wine being shipped through the port uh as opposed to, to bottled wine and, and that's, you know, really, I suppose, ahead of what's expected to be a large harvest. Uh, those guys emptying their, basically emptying their tanks and turning that into cash, even if the prices are a lower price than what they want.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Matt and John. We'll now move on to the airport. I know councillor Paki Paki's question in relation to the C word that has kind of been the overarching um determinant of lots of challenges in the last five years. And it's just been replaced with the five-letter T word, uh, that is likely to have the same impact over the next four years.
Tariff.
Trump.
Oh, COVID.
Oh, I was going to say.
Well, Trump tariff, the two things go together, they're both T words.
I just can't, please just.
Welcome, gentlemen. Uh, we'll hand over to you to uh go through your presentation and then we'll take questions.
So, um, thank you for the opportunity to present. I'd just like to acknowledge Brendan, uh, chief executive has uh not been here that long. So um, and he's going to take the lead in this presentation today. And also acknowledge Adrian, our CFO, just in case there's any questions around any financial areas that, uh, that we need to take. Um, and on that, I'll um hand over to Brendan.
Tena koutokotoa, thank you for having me here today. This slide just touched on our agenda for discussion this morning. And we'll go through a number of key points as previous with the port. First of all, just want to touch on our values. The airport is committed to our vision of being a world-class airport where zero emission aircraft operate. We're also absolutely committed to contributing to a sustainable and prosperous Nelson Tasman. Our values guide our strategic day-to-day decision-making, engagement and leadership. That's how, how we lead the business. Before presenting on the performance of the airport, it's important to speak to some of the fleet and demand challenges that New Zealand is currently facing. This slide was shared by New Zealand earlier this year. It talks to the ground of the aircraft, so it's a bit confusing, but two H is the second half of twenty four, one H, yeah, first half of twenty five. As you can see there, there's a number of aircraft that grounded through the extent of this year. It talks to narrowbody and widebody aircraft. So widebody aircraft, those big aircraft, Lord and two hundred passengers, two rows of aisles in the, in the plane. Typically international jets and narrowbody are the typical A three twenty, seven three seven aircraft that go trans Tasman and some of the domestic routes here. Those aircraft do not fly to Nelson. Um, but they're unavailable. Um, but their availability in the national schedule impacts the regional network by having to mobilize those aircraft, smaller aircraft like the ATRs and the Q300s to fill the gaps in the annual, in the daily schedule in the fleet. Aircraft availability issues at the moment, uh, accompanied by a decrease in demand for corporate and government travel markets. To manage this impact, New Zealand has reduced capacity across the range of their network across the country. That includes the three front routes from Nelson Dean, Nelson to Christchurch, Auckland and Wellington. So what does this all mean? It means that, uh, less planes are flying to Nelson at the moment and that'll extend up to October this year. That is reflected in this, in this chart. So first of all, the annual jet staff volume at the top, jet staff flew to Nelson between 2016, 2019, provided about 130,000 passengers per year to our passenger base. So we are above a million passengers, a great place to be for the airport. The upline on the actual was recovery from COVID. We've been fairly static and stable, um, since 23, all the way through that September, where that capacity and passenger volume starts to taper away. And from about now, through to the end of the financial year, it tapers away a little more as more capacity and more seats are removed from those three front routes. That impact, um, to passengers coming through the airport has an impact to our revenue. And that can be seen in the revenue displayed on this screen. Now, this script, this screen talks to, um, our financial performance from July 24 through to January 25. And it's a reflection of the EBITDA, so earnings, interest, tax, depreciation, net utilization, uh, against our SOI targets. Ground transport, which is essentially taxis and car parking, is a direct reflection of a passenger base. So those two areas of revenue have been decreased. We've made some gains in the property revenue area and managing operational expenses effectively. Looking ahead for the remainder of the financial year, like I touched on, that, that revenue that coming from our passenger base decreases over the next few months, which, you know, lowers the, the dividend, lowers the reduction in, in our EBITDA revenue, aligned with our ground transport revenue and, uh, our cost savings, uh, estimated to be about $400,000 by the end of the financial year. What does this mean? It means the EBITDA target of 11.6 is unlikely. Our forecast for this year is likely to be about $10.6 million. Progress to date on SOI targets, we're tracking really well. Probably 15 targets we have either delivered or on track delivering them, exception of the financial result. Uh, this includes great outcomes in employment, employee engagement, health, safety and risk management and project work. Some of those actions are captured on the next slide. Some, along with the key achievements there, we've achieved and are looking to achieve this year. Um, some of the big ones to call out is the apron redevelopment project, $10 million project, which will improve the layout, safety and efficiency of our apron and bring new life to this asset for the future. A diverse sponsorship program, which has delivered outstanding outcomes for the community, including Nelson Tasman Hospice for the Trees of Remembrance campaign, which was held over Christmas and raised a $40,000 towards the great work that hospice does. We also started a composting program for our coffee cups and lids, which has reduced our general waste volume by more than 25%. Further ahead, key objectives for the airport in the year ahead. We plan to roll out a hidden disabilities program in our terminal, which aligns with the national standard. We're refreshing our airport brand. The current brand has, has a 10-year life. We're looking to refresh that. Uh, working with EV through the corporate framework to deliver a cultural resigned project in the terminal. Introducing our soft plastic recycling program in the terminal for our stakeholders and evolving our risk management and safety management systems.
Uh, thank you Brendan for your presentation. Thanks Quinton for your introduction. So I'll now open it up for questions. Councillor Sanson.
Um, thanks, Mayor Tim, through the chair. I'm Kura, uh, Quinton, Brendan and Adrian. Thanks very much for the presentation. Much appreciated. Um, just a quick question on the grounding, um, slide, um, and then the capacity reduced. Um, I think I heard, and I just want to check, is that the, um, capacity is being reduced by the main carrier because of less demand for travellers? Is it what, do you think, is it kind of happening that way?
Yeah, so two, two factors for that is there is less demand in the corporate and, and government travel markets, um, which is part, reason why, um, the, the, the main aircraft carrier is not, um, you know, flying this, some, some routes. Uh, but also the aircraft availability as those grounded aircraft are in the fleet, in the mix of fleets. Um, some of those turboprop aircraft are used to mobilizing those gaps in that broader schedule. So it's two things.
And, and then the grounding, is that because they've been grounded for maintenance or something? I think I just didn't understand.
Yeah.
The significance, like, like what's causing the grounding?
Good question. Yeah, the grounding is caused because of maintenance concerns, yeah.
Okay. So, so is that, is that then that the carrier needs to be looking to upgrade their fleet to avoid like ongoing grounding issues? Is that kind of what needs, I mean, is that what's being talked about or?
That's, that's one, but that's one of the challenges, yes, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
There were some legal constraints on the airport company being able to engage with some of the community organisations. While plan change, um, was going through the independent commissioners process. I'd be interested for the chief executive to advise us as to, um, what meetings you've had, if any, uh, with the Tahunenui, uh, beach camp. Um, we've also heard this morning from the Tahunenui Business Association. Um, and how you feel those meetings have gone, uh, and, uh, any plans that you have to try and improve the relationship between the airport company, uh, and particularly the beach camp and the community association.
Yeah, thank you.
Brendan.
Yeah, um, since the, the recommendations were released by the panel in December, we've actively worked with, um, all three, um, organisations in the community, being the golf club, being the holiday park and the Tahunenui Business Association. Uh, we've met with them multiple times. Um, the intent of those meetings has been to talk through some of the challenges they see in the NOR and the plan change. And I'm trying to address some gaps in their knowledge in that space and try and answer the questions they may have around the impacts of, of the, of the plan change in our, to those, to their areas, which they occupy in the communities around them. It's been very proactive. We've had good conversations, progressed, you know, fairly well. Um, we are talking through more, uh, meetings in the weeks ahead as we enter this, um, more complex period around, um, the appeals process and what that means for us moving forward. Um, we would do, we'll, we'll continue to progress those conversations to fill those gaps and, and try and work on a resolution that sees us all moving forward together.
And could you just, um, they said to us this morning, they felt that they were making an effort. Um, can you just give us a little bit more flavour? Do you think the relations are improving? Uh, or do you think that they, um, uh, 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 are not particularly?
Yeah, I absolutely agree they're improving. Yeah, the communication's been very positive. We're working to understand, um, the challenges that they're experiencing. And I would absolutely agree that those parties would agree equally that we are, um, the communication channels have improved and that the correspondence and sentiment between both parties has improved significantly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any, uh, councillor Alice?
Uh, thank you. Thank you so much for your support and welcome. Um, they, um, just a couple of things. Um, so when you are saying that there's a bit of conversation happening, is there going to be any movement? I note that, um, some issues were raised about the levels of noise testing in the Tahunenui area. Um, is there progress coming in that area and perhaps looking at changing to make those more realistic? Are we at that stage yet?
Um, that's been reviewed, um, at the moment by, by both sides of the consultant base. And, uh, yeah, it's, we've, we've part of the, the process of, of, um, during the appeal process. Um, so during the mediation through appeal process, so probably inappropriate comment on that in detail now.
Uh, thank you. And the second one, um, I'm really pleased to see that the sunflower lanyard program is on the agenda. Um, I don't know if many people are aware of what that actually is. Uh, can you give us some information about what that might be and what the actual timing might be? Cause it's a great initiative.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great initiative. Um, it's been rolled out across Australia and New Zealand. So what it is, is for people who, um, have a hidden disability, um, to present to the airport. Uh, they've provided a, a lanyard. We've probably purchased the lanyards, the lanyards, the green lanyard with, um, taffodils printed on them. And what that is, is a place of awareness for, um, community to come in, um, to the airport. And if they are facing challenges in the airport from noise or from congestion, um, our staff are aware of, of their, of their, um, you know, hidden stability. They can take the right cautionary processes and have the right customer experience processes in place to provide them comfort, um, during the time in the terminal. Um, so we've already procured the, the lanyards and we are ma- making some public announcements around rolling those out. So they're available right now for the community to come to the airport and collect them.
Great. Thank you, uh, for the explanation. It does sound like a very good initiative. Councillor Maile and then councillor Stella.
Just a quick question. Uh, with the, um, reduced capacity from here in New Zealand, is there any opportunity for Origin Air and Sounds Air to increase their capacity or is there the passenger numbers for them to do it?
There actually is capacity for both those airlines to, to fly more and fly more passengers and we're working very actively with them. Um, in that process at the moment, we've got a meeting, we meet them almost weekly, talk about opportunities and how we can support them to achieve those opportunities. And we can support them through a number of ways and, uh, we have those conversations frequently.
Thank you, councillor Stella.
Thanks, Mayor King. Um, thanks for the presentation. A lot of really positive stuff in there. So it's good to see. And it seems your staff are happy. So that's great. Um, at the previous equivalent meeting, I did ask about measuring and reporting on scope three emissions. And the response was, we're working on it. I wonder if we could just get an update on that?
Yeah, I'll pass it. Adrian is more, um, experienced with, uh, the carbon emissions. Uh, Kura Koto, uh, yeah, so, uh, as you know, we've just, um, we published our first, uh, climate disclosure report last year. We're currently working on a FY25 report. We are looking at ways to increase the boundary of our emission recognition under scope three. Um, and, but at this stage, we're not in a place to sort of, uh, you know, we're, we're working towards essentially recording things like aviation activity. The crux of the matter is at what point do we recognize that? So, um, and working through with other industry leaders in the field, um, have a conversation with Christchurch ship next week, for example, um, looking at, well, what is the industry standard and how can we meet that in terms of our measurement? I think probably what I would have reiterated last time, um, is the airport itself has very low scope, one, scope two. In fact, um, in fact, lower than our regional pairs, um, at a starting point because of our terminal, um, and the relatively efficiency of the terminal. Um, there is limited scope for us to mitigate and reduce, um, in scope one and two, in the sense that, um, you know, we're pretty small anyway. So our focus increasingly will be on scope three. Um, but we still haven't defined the boundaries yet. Um, other than we currently measure staff commute, um, and other vehicle activities that are not necessarily related to, um, directly to our business. But we are improving, um, and you can expect to see, um, a level of increase in sophistication in the space in the next report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Courtney and then we'll look to wrap up this presentation. Councillor Courtney.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Tim, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. With, with a sort of a slowdown, I would say, and I heard from the port cap, possibly even capital spend. Because, and you've got to, oh, something to deal with there as well with flight numbers, um, and listening and passenger numbers also. What particular, you've got a bold program of capital expenditure going forward. You really have. It's impressive in many areas. Um, and I'm just wondering, are there any that stand out that perhaps you'll have to look at now? I'm thinking on the eastern side of Saltwater Creek, where you're putting parking in there, a couple of bridges or your commercial development on the south end of the airport. Any of these going to be impacted by the current situation?
Uh, what I could say, um, councillor Courtney, is that we believe that this current state of events with the, it's specifically the ground engine maintenance issues within New Zealand is likely to be an 18-month timeframe. We're, we're confident at this stage. It could be longer, but relatively short term. So we're still investing for the long term. Yes, it, it is forcing us to sort of reconsider our options in terms of our burn rate, the time of committing resources. And as, as has already demonstrated, we've, we've reduced that somewhat. Um, but we believe that once, uh, capacity is returned to the airport, um, in the sense that we, you know, the jets are back operating domestically, we have enough, um, turboprop capacity that we will see a resurgence in air travel.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for coming in, doing a presentation and also being available to answer questions. So at this point, um, just before we break, if we could go into public excluded. Um, so item seven, so if I can have a mover and a seconder to go into committee, move councillor Paki Paki, second to councillor Rainey. All those in favour, please say aye. And I'll explain why in a second.